I am the infamous Ms. Rhoda Young Live, the most famous news reporter in the 757. Well, we are here in Suffolk, Virginia, right now trying to figure out what's really going on with these silly city councilmen illegally doing things in the city of Suffolk, Virginia, where you do see it here first before waving those ten, channel three, and also channel thirteen news. Right now, we are at a press conference and we're waiting for it to begin. Please stand by. We are behind the scenes in Suffolk, Virginia, where many of the important and elite members are coming out to show their support and their anger in what's really going on out here. As you can see, these people in these uniforms are the guys that work here in Suffolk, Virginia, who's gonna be affected by the poor decision of three different elected officials in Suffolk, Virginia. Why are they making these guys unemployed in Suffolk, Virginia? Because a black man won office as a city councilman in Suffolk, Virginia, who is their boss man. Since their boss man won the seat of city councilman, they have stripped him of his contract to employ these black guys in this office here in Suffolk, Virginia on Rhoda Young Live, where you do see it here first before waving news ten, channel three, and also channel thirteen news. Breaking news in Suffolk, Virginia. This is Leotis Williams, who won the city councilman seat in Suffolk, Virginia. He has been a pillar in the community for multiple years. He believe in God, he's a family man, an entrepreneur. He seek equality, visionary businessman. He employs several unemployed, several low-income people in the community. Several black people worked for him. When he won this position in Suffolk, Virginia as city councilman, three other city elected officials became angry, bitter, and jealous. They plotted on him just because he won. They stripped them of a business contract that he had for years, which employed all these people that you see behind us. Just because Mr. Leotis Williams won, the guys that you see in the orange, is now about to become unemployed because other city members has gotten angry and bitter and jealous. Y'all must understand, when they take his contract, all these guys right here now is gonna be unemployed because of jealousy that Mr. Lo- Lo- Leotis Williams is now a city councilman. So now they're about to make several people in the community unemployed because of jealousy that's going on. Behind the scenes with the city councilmen. I am the infamous Ms. Rhoda Young Live, where you do see it here first before waving news ten, also channel thirteen news, just like that. If y'all can think back, it's just like what happened to Mr. Carlos Howard when it came to the funeral home business. Every time a black man becomes successful, it's always a snake in the grass in the background trying to destroy him. And that's what's going on today. They say not on their watch, not on their watch. Stand by as the press conference is about to begin. Breaking news live in the 757, S to the V, Suffolk, Virginia. Can I ask you a question, please? How long have you been working with Ms. Lee, um, Leotis Williams? How long you been employed by him? Two years. What type of employee is he?
He's a great man.
Can you talk up a little bit?
Yes, I've been here eight years and I've seen so much. He's a great man.
Talk up a little bit louder.
I've been here eight years and he's a great man. He did a lot of stuff for people. He helped a lot of people. When I got saved from the cane, yeah, started working for Leotis Williams. He gave me a chance to, you know, get myself together. I did brickwork, but I couldn't do the brickwork. I came to see his landscape.
Okay.
Uh, just so I could be able to keep myself busy.
Right.
And now, now we're eighteen years, I'm still here. So he keeping us employed, you know, he keeping us growing, he keeping the child, he keeping us employed and busy. Um, even though this is our whole city, he's still finding time to keep us to make money, to keep running, and now I'm practicing on the money.
Wow.
So he's a great man. He do so much for me.
Can I ask you a question? How is this gonna affect you by him losing his contract and you not having nowhere to work at? And you've been already at this job over eight years. And like you said, it's a pandemic, and he's still paying y'all during this pandemic. How would this affect you and also your family?
Well, it also affect you a lot because now our work don't stop. You know, our hours don't stop. And you know, now, you know, days that he could put us to work, he even be able to put us to work anymore. You know, it just taking a lot out of us.
Thank you. Can you give us your name, please?
Jada Outlaw.
Thank you, Mr. Outlaw. And back to you. You said you've been working with him for two years now. What type of person, what type of person is, what is his character?
He's a caring man. He actually, he's actually a caring man. He make sure that all his people is actually settled, you know, well taken care of.
What type of work do you do for him?
All around, um, cutting grass, mulching, snow work. Basically cleaning up areas, all types.
But Mr. Otis losing his major contract that he had for years with the city of Suffolk, Virginia, how is that gonna affect you and also your family?
Put it in there, put it in there. Y'all folks out here, you know, they gotta get what they can get. And some folks that's not being able to get what they can get, you know, by leaving, they gonna give people opportunities and chances. It's kind of hard during, during the pandemic.
Wow, wow. Thank you for coming out during the pandemic. That's the during the pandemic. Thank you.
We also have one of our youngest generation that's working for us at this time.
One of y'all younger generation that's working with y'all at this time. Good afternoon, I'm Rhoda Young, the most famous news reporter. Um, how long have you been working with Mr. Leotis Williams? A few months. Um, what type of person is he?
He's a genuine person. He's, he'll take the time to sit, sit down and listen to you and just get to know his employees.
And, um, how, um, what made you interested in getting a job with him? What made you want to work with him?
There was a lot of factors that played in, but mainly because I knew that he was willing to give me a job.
Wow.
With the lack of experience I have with cutting grass, I quickly learned how to do all the tasks correctly. And I see myself as a future, quickly, if I stay long enough.
Wow. How would this affect you if this job, being that they trying to snatch away his, um, they trying to snatch away his contract, um, how's this gonna affect you when he employed you and you have a family to take care of? How is this gonna affect you one-on-one during this pandemic?
Well, it's mainly, it's mainly just me that I'm focused on right now. He's been, he's been a ear that listens to me and he's been willing to work me even when there wasn't much work to do. He's been willing to take the time out, call me, let me know when we're working. When we're working, even if I'm not able to work, he'll call me personally. Like, I don't need you to come in right now, but I'll let you know when I need you to come in.
How old are you for the camera? You seventeen years old, and he gave you a job? He gave you an opportunity to start your life off on the right track? And they trying to steal that from you all? Not just Mr. Leotis, but the whole, the whole crew? Everyone that he affects, everyone that he pay, everyone he help take care of, is gonna be across-the-board disaster if they take this contract from him? Thank you. Is anything else you'd like to say? What's your name? Thank you, Jaden. I appreciate you. I'm Rhoda Young Live. How you doing? It's okay if I speak over here? How long have you been working with Mr. Leotis? Six years. What's his temperament?
Uh, he's a good, caring guy and he is, he is a good, caring guy. He gives folks, you know what I'm saying, opportunity, even though he come out and tell, present, you know what I'm saying, and, you know what I'm saying, get on the right track and help folks out different situations and also he's a caring boss man.
Wow. If they steal, which they planning on doing, stealing his contract, they employed multiple citizens in Suffolk, Virginia, how is that gonna affect you as a citizen of Suffolk during the pandemic?
It's gonna affect me a lot because some fact, he's always there, you know what I'm saying, caring for our family and everything else. By us being not working, you know what I'm saying, it gonna affect us a lot. Not only us, the whole community, you know what I'm saying? And he get back to the community and everything else. So it's gonna affect more than us, you know what I'm saying, workers.
Wow. Is anything you'd like to say to the, um, the, um, the city of Suffolk about stripping y'all away from y'all job just because y'all boss man won a seat as city councilman? What would you like to say?
I'd like to say, let them, let Leotis be and let keep his contract and so you get back to the community during this COVID-19 and you not getting, you know what I'm saying, good assistance because everything's closed down, you can't leave their space.
Right, thank you. And your name one more time for the camera? Camarosco, yes. Can you just speak up for me?
Every year during the turkey giveaway, we have every city official out there participating in it happen. But now you got the one that's working on it, city officials want to strip all of that away. They know what he do to the public, they know what he do to the neighborhood. So why would you take everything away that he helping the people that are the city of Suffolk? You would think you want to keep everything in the city of Suffolk with the city of Suffolk. That mean if you spending money that you working for the city and you getting from the city and you giving it back to the public, I mean, why would you take that away?
Right.
So now, in, in that case, you letting me know that you don't care about the city anyway?
Right.
Because you taking the money now that that man is getting from all the city of Suffolk. Don't, don't get me wrong, he got other jobs. But I'm saying here in the city of Suffolk, when you do that, that mean now you taking all the money and all the food out to people that he taking care of all these years. He been doing turkey giveaway for over thirteen years, giving back to the city of Suffolk. But now you want to script that away by taking the job that he had for years anyway. You know, all these jobs he had way before this city council stuff came up. But now they taking it all the way because they don't want, and I hate to say a black man succeed in what he doing for the city of Suffolk.
Amen, amen, amen. I see you here, I know you have your video camera on, but can I ask you a question, please? How long have you been an employee of Mr. Leotis?
Uh, twenty-three years.
Twenty-three years? You been working for him? How is this gonna affect you if they strip away his contract?
What it gonna affect me physically and because I've been here for so long and this is what I get to, uh, take care of my children and my family.
Wow. Did he keep y'all employed during the pandemic?
Yes, ma'am. I've been employed the whole time.
The whole time during the pandemic, he kept his employees employed? Wow, wow. So where do you see yourself at if they just snatch everything away and they just did a contract? Where do you see yourself at in the next week or two?
Uh, well, I really can't tell because, you know, I've been here all my life, so I would be handing them out to see what's next.
Thank you, thank you. Hey, guys, you heard it here first. See, Missy won't stand in the front. Missy won't stand in the front.
Well, guys, you heard it here first where what the city councilman and the city elected officials doing here to the citizens of Suffolk, Virginia is absolutely ridiculous. Um, I'm Rhoda Young Live, the press conference is about to start now, guys. We gonna listen to what they really have to say and how this is gonna be a domino effect across the board to the citizens of Suffolk, Virginia if they strip him of his contract that he been having for years just because of jealousy, just because another black man has won a seat on the board as city councilman, Rhoda Young Live, Rhoda Young Live.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Um, my name is Brandon Random and full disclosure, I will say that, uh, I was Mr. Leotis Williams' campaign manager, uh, in the city council race for the Wellerville girl. But today I'm here in my capacity as a political activist. So I'm taking off my hat as a campaign manager and I'm really here to stand in solidarity with these employees behind us here at LW's Lawn Service. Let me be very clear. What has occurred in the city of Suffolk this week is politics at its worst. Let me be clear about this again. What occurred here in the city of Suffolk this week is politics at its worst. Because of the actions of this city council and politics being played by three city council members, these employees behind us may lose their jobs. That is the one key thing that has brought us all here today. In the midst of a pandemic, this, that is disproportionately affecting minority businesses and families all over the United States, there's a possibility that this small business owner and his staff may suffer as well. These staff members are everyday people, come from all walks of life. Some have college degrees, some have high school diplomas, some are re-entering to society. But regardless of where they came from, Mr. Williams has given opportunity after opportunity to have a job here in society. And this injustice that is happening here is happening all at the hands of the city of Suffolk. Please let me explain to you the timeline of events and how this all occurred and how we got here today, here on January the twenty-eighth. In two thousand nineteen, Mr. Williams participated in extremely competitive bid process where he went up against sixteen other businesses. And in February of two thousand nineteen, he was awarded this contract that we are here for today. This contract is worth an annual one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars for three years with the annual revival period. Last year, LW's Lawn Service contract was renewed with no issue. Prior to his bid, Mr. Williams and his staff had won a bid service for these same exact properties since two thousand sixteen. Meaning for the last five years, Mr. Williams and his staff have bid twice and won and provided exceptional service to the city of Suffolk with no problems. Now here's where the politics come into play at. Last year, after all the years of service that Mr. Williams had provided for this community, he decided to participate in civic engagement and run for city council. Let me be clear, I'm no attorney. But one of the first things we did in the capacity as campaign manager at the time and in the capacity as a business owner is we sought out a verbal opinion from being a senior city official stating that Mr. Williams would not be in a conflict of interest of his contract if he was to win at the city council race. Upon him winning the city council race, his attorneys immediately received a legal opinion from an attorney from the Virginia Conflict of Interest and Ethics Advisory Council, stating, and I'm paraphrasing, that they provided a legal statement from the attorneys to the press stating this, that Mr. Williams would not be in a conflict of interest with his past contracts as long as they were bidding on and won prior to his service and prior to being elected to the Suffolk City Council. The city council had one task, one task only, that was to pass a resolution stating that Mr. Williams was not in a conflict of interest prior to the renewal of his contract this year. The city council has had this opinion from the Commonwealth of Virginia since mid-December. And for the last month and a half, three city council members in particular, Vice Mayor Leroy Bennett, Councilman Roger Fawcett, and Councilman Donald Goldberg held up the resolution for being voted on. So on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, Mr. Williams was sent a letter that after five years of exceptional service to the city of Suffolk, his one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar contract in the midst of a pandemic was canceled. They gave no reason on why they canceled his contract and stated at the end of the letter that it had nothing to do with his performance, but they were canceling his contract. And because of the interactions of three city council members holding up a resolution that would have solved this entire issue and would not be here today and pure political games played, now Mr. Williams may have to lay off thirty to forty percent of his staff and the livelihood of these employees behind us are at stake. Again, this is politics at its worst. So we must ask Vice Mayor Bennett, we must ask Councilman Fawcett, and we must ask Councilman Goldberg, why would they not vote for a resolution to help save the jobs of these employees and continue a thriving minority-owned business here in the city of Suffolk? We must ask the interim city manager, Mr. Albert Moore, who in his office or what city official directed the purchasing agent to make this decision? And we must ask, have any of these government officials had to sit down with their employees or with their family members and explain to them that they were laid off because elected officials did not do their jobs? Remember this, this is not a race issue. This is a civil rights issue. Because what happened here in the city of Suffolk, what the city of Suffolk has said is that at any time, they can cancel a city contract between a small woman or minority-owned business without pause. And now we hear from Mr. Leotis Williams, business owner of LW's Lawn Service and city councilman, Mr. Williams.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I like to make clear that I am here representing LW Lawn Service and being the owner of LW Lawn Service and my staff. I'm not here in any formal capacity as a city manager, I mean, city councilman. I need to make that clear. I am not here on behalf of the city council or my position as a city council. I'm merely here because of the injustice that has been done to my company and my employees because of, I think, personal reasons, whatever they may be. But let me say this. Let me speak to you as a minority business owner. This is my life, this is what I live. This is how I deal with things and how, how I have dealt with things over the years. First of all, it's hard getting in the front door to even bid on a job. That's the first problem. Because the doors are not open wide for minority businesses when, um, when the options are, when, 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 when there are times where, you know, people can bid on jobs. We're, we're not offered that. A lot of times, we don't know anything about it. We're not given the opportunity to bid on it. Um, when we are allowed to bid on jobs, understand, we have to bid cheaper. Let me emphasize that, much cheaper than the other companies. And if we awarded the jobs, then we must work twice as hard. This is what I'm saying, twice as hard to keep them. So that's, that's, that's my world. That's my world, that's how it really is for a minority business owner. I knew going into the election that, based on my conversation, that by me being awarded the contracts prior to becoming a councilman, that there was no conflict of interest. So I decided to go ahead and pursue the Wellerville ROC. Now, that I am councilman and we have gathered an opinion from the Ethics Council Richmond saying that it was not a conflict of interest. I'm being faced with the problem of having my contract stripped from me mainly because, or they trying to say is because, I decided to seek a political office to better my community, my people. Uh, most of you are aware of the annual turkey giveaway that I give on a yearly basis, which we've been able to feed over a hundred and seventy thousand individuals in the last nineteen years. You know, I started this company with two pushmores and a weed eater in the back of a Chevy Chevette. I worked and I worked hard. It was my dream to make this business grow. I remember my friends and colleagues used to laugh at me. "So, look at you, Lee, what you doing?" You know, "You got that weed eater and the pushmore in the back of the car." Trying to make it, trying to make it work. I was determined that I wanted to be an entrepreneur and I wanted to someday be able to employ people within the city of Suffolk. I'm not worried about myself, but I'm worried about these guys here. I'm worried about these guys and their families that's gonna have to suffer because I was elected to a position. A position that I was supposed to help them, not hurt them. Uh, I just want the purchasing agent, I want the, um, officials in the city to take a look at this thing, rethink it, uh, and do what's right. Again, we've got an opinion, and the opinion says it was not a conflict of interest. It is not a conflict of interest. So why should we be penalized because I decided to run for office and to continue to serve my fellow Suffolkians in a different capacity? and to continue to serve my fellow Suffolkians in a different capacity? With that said, I'd like to call up one of my employees, no, I'd like to call up Reverend Hiltman to speak. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gerald Goodman. I pastor the New Gospel Temple Church located in the city of Suffolk, Virginia. Uh, Mr. Leonis Williams is an unselfish gentleman, unselfish businessman uh, who works hard, uh, for his people. He employs not just, uh, anybody and everybody, he is, he employs individuals that can't get employment other places. Uh, it's powerful, uh, the love that he has, that God has put in his heart to be able to share with the community from year to year. Uh, also, I, I, I admire him, a lot of men that you see, that I have seen that work for him, they can't go other places and get jobs. Uh, often I encourage him, uh, because of his mother, uh, she would be awesome and, uh, really proud of him, the stance that he have taken, uh, to be a servant. Uh, it's one thing to be a businessman, but it's another thing to be a servant. And I found this gentleman to be a servant, not concerned about himself, but concerned for mankind. He works hard all the time. I called him on the side and I said, "Where you at?" He's, I said, "I know you're, you on the job." Why? Because he's trying to create work for these men that's standing behind me right now. So I, I really don't understand why we're here, uh, because of what's going on. But we're living in such a time today that if you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything. So if he would have just, just accepted what they was visioning at him, then he would have hurt a whole lot of other individuals besides himself. So we, we, we're just, I'm just proud to stand here, uh, to talk on his behalf because he is an awesome man and awesome businessman.
I'm gonna have one of my employees come up.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, my name is Gary Outlaw. I've been with L W Lawn Service for eight years. I came out doing brickwork. When I got sick, I didn't want to stay home, so I came to L W Lawn Service and asked him for a job. Leonis, as a man as he is, a good heart, he ended up giving me a job. He told me, "I'm not gonna be a taxpayer for what that Brickland crew pay you, but I'm gonna give you a job." So he still gave me a job, and that was eight years ago. And now I'm watching the city of Suffolk going down because I don't think it's some years over for medical. I can't go anywhere else to find a job. I mean, I made my home here when I came with L W Lawn Service. And I told him years ago before this Congress, this, um, city council stuff came up, "I'm gonna be with you, I'm gonna stay with you, I'm gonna be great by your side." But now the city of Suffolk is trying to rip jobs away from him that he been putting, uh, giving us work for years. So don't do that, citizen, take time out and think about what you're doing. Don't make this like that President stuff, all this stuff that went on in the White House, because everyone have agenda. And for this thing that just happened after all, all these years he had his job, it's gotta be a reason. And it ain't nothing, it's gotta be person. I mean, with, um, city manager, I mean, not city manager, excuse me, uh, councilman, I mean Leroy Bennett and all the other councilmen that's on his seat, half of them been out here for the turkey giveaways. They participated in the turkey giveaway. Now they turning to the other chief and then you wanna rip all this stuff away so he can stop helping the city of Suffolk? Why would you do that? Why would you put yourself in harm's way because just like you doing Mr. Williams, well, Councilman Williams, the Lord will come back and do the same thing to you? I mean, and I'm saying, I'm not putting religious in it, but just like at the White House. Trump did so much stuff, but now look at the thing, everything is turning around. You see what I'm saying? You got to do the right thing because God's here, everything that we doing. And if he see that you trying to take the food out of the people mouth that this man have been feeding for years, he don't, he's not pleased, he's not pleased whatsoever. So I'm asking, as to the end half of my coworkers, do the right thing, do the right thing. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. King said it the best, that injustice anywhere is a direct injustice everywhere. And now, uh, Mr. Williams and I will take questions, uh, from any of the press.
I have a question. Mr. Williams, I'm Rhody Young Live, I'm straight out of Norfolk, Virginia. And I came here to stand with you in unity of what's really going on to the citizens of Portsmouth, Virginia. It's a terrible thing that's going on to you. How do you think it's gonna affect your employees? You know, we gonna set you to aside because we know you're gonna be okay. Our biggest concern, why I come in from Norfolk, Virginia, is the effect, the domino effect, what the city of Suffolk, Virginia is doing to you directly is trickling down on so many citizens of Suffolk, Virginia. How are you bothered and how, how much pressure do you have about to make so many people unemployed and maybe homeless, maybe hungry?
I believe that God put me here for a reason. And the reason was to be able to help my fellow man. I'm really worried about the possibilities of having to lay my employees off. I'm worried about their families, I'm worried about them not being able to pay their rent, I'm worried about them not being able to put food on the table. Whatever I can do, whether, whatever other avenues that I can find to create some other type of income for these guys, I will do. I will not give up on them, I will be there for them, I will be their support as long as God sees fit for me to be.
Hi, I'm thirteen News. Earlier you said that, uh, this was probably maybe a press hold decision of a council member. Uh, do you also believe that race is a factor in this, in deciding to cut this contract?
Let's just say, I believe that it's more person than anything else at this point.
Mr. Williams, Rhody Young, once again, um, how would you, on a professional level, be able to sit in a city councilman meeting with the people who've done such harm to you? How would you be able to deal with them on a professional level from this day forward?
I was elected as a councilman for the Wellerville Borough. I'm obligated to do what I need to do on behalf of the citizens of Suffolk and the people who put me in that position. I will not take what happened to me or my company personally. I was elected to perform a task, I was elected to, to do whatever nee, was needed to do for my constituencies, and I will continue to do that and not allow my personal, my personal feelings impact by judgment and what needs to be done on the city council.
Can you speak to this, do you have something to say? Um, can you speak to this timeline of when you got the notice at the city, to the council and the contract? Um, and then, you know, talk about, you know, the, you know, have you had any conversation with anybody with the city? Either the three council members in question, city manager, or the purchasing agent, as you, you know, had mentioned?
Proud to, the election, proud to be getting elected. Uh, I didn't have a conversation, had not had a conversation with the current city manager or, um, any council members. Uh, it wasn't until I was elected that the questions started arising as to whether or not it was a conflict of interest. Uh, I've had a few conversations with some council members. Um, I had conversation with the previous city manager, but I, I just feel that what's happening to me at this point is more because of the fact that I ran for office, more because now I have a voice in the community, a voice as a government official for this city. And before, I was just, just a guy that just gave away turkeys. Now that I'm sitting up there with them, they have to listen to me, they have to, um, listen to me and allow me to speak on behalf of my constituents.
Wavy TV, I got a reporter on the line, can you hear up?
Hi guys, yeah, my name is Gina Revolow of Wavy, um, sorry to make it personal, just asking a couple of questions. And I, well, that's already been addressed, uh, school mark here over the phone. Uh, the legal opinion that you guys got from, uh, the Commonwealth of Virginia, was that from the Attorney, the Attorney General?
Uh, no, that was not from the Office of the Attorney General. Uh, that was from the, uh, the Virginia Conflict of Interest and Ethics Advisory Council. Uh, we do have a, uh, legal, uh, statement from the attorneys, um, and we will produce that for any media that, uh, would like that we was looking for. And that will give more details.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off again, it's a little hard to hear, um, but yes, this, that was my next question. If there was a copy of that we could get, um, uh, just to take a look at. And then also my next question was, um, is there any, are there any plans for legal action, uh, before the cancellation of this contract?
All option, all options on the table, all options on the table. Thank you.
I would like to ask, okay.
Sorry, another question. Have any of the other council members issued any other statements or any other explanations? Or have it just been a complete, just clean cut off with this contract?
We received notice on the twenty-first, twenty-second, uh, it was just a cutoff notice. We haven't, I haven't seen anything on my end.
Everything on my.
Can we hear it from the councilman once, one more time, please? As a citizen of Virginia, we would like to know who by name personally attacked you and also your business and also your seat in office as a city councilman, and we also would like to know the position that they hold.
Well, I, I, I've stated.
Can we hear it from the councilman? What you want came for?
Um, actually, I really didn't want to mention names, and I really shouldn't mention names because of my position as a councilman. So at this point, I don't want to give out their names.
Thank you.
And, and, and the names I gave out, again, I, I'm, I'm coming to you as a political activist. I, I, I was still a city councilman, and I, I know who the owners are. And it's not the first time in years since I've been here that these individuals have been brought to my attention as an activist in this community that, uh, in public, uh, they say one thing, but behind the scenes, they do another thing.
Can we have their names and their position that they hold?
Yes, uh, Vice Mayor Leroy Bennett, uh, Councilman, uh, Fawcett, Roger Fawcett, and Councilman Donald Goldberg.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Williams, is there anything else that you would like to say to your employees and also your people or something?
To my employees, keep up the faith, we're gonna get through this. And again, if we don't get the contracts back, I will find something else. I will not see you out in the cold and I will not allow you to go one day without a roof on your head. To the citizens of Suffolk, you elected me as your councilman. I plan to be the best councilman I can be. And I want to do what's best for our city, the city that I love. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was it an immediate termination of the contract or is there an effective date by which the contract is terminated? And then how many employees do you have that lives there?
It's not an immediate termination, uh, actually, it's a thirty-day termination which, uh, goes into effect March first. Uh, I currently have ten employees that work those particular sites, uh, of the building sites for the city of Suffolk, and they will probably lose their jobs.
Wow.
When was the original contract supposed to end?
This contract is supposed to end in twenty-twenty-three.
Wow.
If we may add, if we may add, uh, the contract was renewed last year, there's no issue at all.
And prior to the renewal of the contract, I think it said that, you know, had the expiration of the, of, you know, February twenty, twenty-twenty, that had to be, the city had to kick in to renew it. And I think something said that that they had on that, is that, is that correctly taken through the timeline, just so that we understand that?
Yeah, after the, each, uh, after twelve months of, of service, uh, annually, um, the city had the right, and I have the right, to renew the contract or, um, cancel the contract. Well, in the past, I've never had a problem with the city renewing contracts. This is the first time, uh, in my thirty-seven years that I've had a contract, a non-renewal. Uh, not only did I get a, I'm, I'm having a non-renewal, but I'm having a non-renewal, huh, for no clause, there was nothing wrong. Uh, I've had several contracts with the city. I've had several contracts with the city over the years, um, which actually expands almost twenty years. Uh, I've had different projects with the city throughout the last eighteen to twenty years. And I can honestly say I've never had a contract terminated. I never had a contract that did not renew. This is the first time.
The citizens, um, of Suffolk, Virginia, also Norfolk, Virginia Beach, Newport News, Hampton, seven-five-seven, want to know, why do you think your contract was stolen or snatched away from you? Why do you think it?
I think it was done for maybe personal, implicit reasons. Um, but again, I won't give names.
Since the twenty-first and twenty-second, I guess since that, I guess the timeline for the date when you got the notice that you were gonna terminate the contract, have you had, have you had any conversation with the city since now?
No, I haven't.
That's all the questions and, uh, uh, my name is on the press release as well as Kimberly Greenbush. If you would like to email us or give us a phone call if you have any further questions. And, uh, either Kim or myself will provide any other details. We will get the legal statement to the media, and if, uh, if you have any other questions, we'll be sure to correspond with you via email, uh, as well.
Excuse me. One last thing, would there be any other meetings anytime soon if the citizens want to come out and stand with y'all on this?
Yes, uh, yes, uh, we do, we do have a, uh, a call to action plan. And I want to name off the three things for our call to action plan. The first thing is we're asking, uh, that on February third, Sunday, uh, that you, uh, do join, uh, myself and other local leaders at the city council meeting at six P M. Um, and we ask that you do sign up in advance, uh, so that, we're not speaking on behalf of the councilmen, but we're speaking on behalf of minority-owned businesses here in the city of Suffolk. And we're speaking on behalf of these individuals behind us, uh, so that this will not happen to the next small woman and minority-owned business here in the city of Suffolk wants to get a contract. Uh, our next call to act, uh, action is we're asking that the city purchasing office Uh our next call to act, uh action is we're asking that the city purchasing office immediately rescind the cancellation letter for the contract. We ask them to rescind it until this matter is properly adjudicated by the city council, in which the state directed the city council to adjudicate the matter. So we ask them to halt all actions pertaining to this uh uh letter um and rescind it. And we also asking, we will be asking, we will be submitting a FOIA request. We encouraging to be doing the same for all communications between all city council members, the city manager's office, and the purchasing department. Text messages, calls, emails, visits pertaining to this contract. Um we wanna get to the root of who made this decision, because right now, it's only one person's name signed with the document. And trust me, I know how municipal government works, he received it from a higher authority. I can assure you of that. So we will be submitting a FOIA request, and we ask the media to do the same thing, to submit a FOIA request so they can receive all communication, all pertaining to this contract. Thank you very much, thank you all for coming on today. Oh, yes, that's somebody else, we have another employee who'd like to speak.
Um good evening, my name is uh Jaden Peere, I'm a high school senior at Kingsport High School. Uh I've been working for Mr. Williams for about a few months now. Uh I just wanna say that he was a genuine and awesome man, he is willing to sit down with you and listen. Uh recently, I've been going through some family issues and me working here and receiving my annual check has been able to help me significantly with my uh personal problems. Uh I just wanna say thank you to him, my uh colleagues, the coworkers, uh I just wanna say, don't take my job away from me. Thank you.
Thank you, that's sad, that's so sad. Yes, that's sad. Thank you. Yes, 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 can I get an interview with you, please, thank you, thank you. How you doing? I know, um it's my pleasure to meet you and see you once again, I see you on a lot of different political gangs and things like that. Um can you, can enlighten Facebook a little bit and break this down for us, for the ones that don't understand autographs, what they are, democratic stuff, they go over here and see your politics?
Yeah, so basically, um this is Mr. Williams, who's been here since we were four decades now. He has had um contracts with the city of Suffolk um for the last four decades. Okay, he has a law service, a company called Illinois Law Service. And so when this happens, he is known as Suffolk's best candidate.
Okay.
Every year, Rhody, he gives away thousands and thousands of turnies.
Wow.
He employs young people, elderly people, old people, together for opportunities, with the knowledge and everything he has and everything. So what happened was, learning and growing over the years, being involved in the community, people have been constantly after him in six weeks. You really need to be a part of the senior leadership and being elected, they should, it's time to be a public member. So this past year, we were able to work a campaign for the city of Suffolk, and he was elected as city councilor of the William Dale Hall in Suffolk. Now, this was on November third.
Uh huh.
And literally less than thirty minutes later, information started arising about all of this contract that he has. And they wanted to basically, we found out that behind the scenes, they were working to take away the contract.
Wow.
And keep in mind, he has contracts in the city of Portsmouth, um here in Suffolk and other areas. He probably has worked over two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, Rhody.
Wow.
All over from the different things that he does, he is a developer, he has a lot of properties out there. His opportunities for people with bad, everything like that, maybe.
So the only place, only place he's been attacked at is the place where he won officer in Suffolk.
Yeah.
So only place he's been.
Rhody, it's only what, the end of January?
And he just got elected.
Just got elected in November.
And when he stepped, when did he step in office?
On November third.
Wow.
So he was only sworn in the first of January.
Right, January, been the sworn in time, so within a couple of weeks after he got sworn in.
A couple of weeks, so literally last, like the last Friday, he was notified by the email.
So basically.
Not even the email to say that you're not gonna go in front of the team, you're sick of your contract.
So basically, what was doing is, once he was um voted in, people started working behind the scenes to destroy him.
Correct.
So once he got voted in, and he got his seat sworn in in January, after January, they came out with all the BS that they had planned for him for winning. Do you think this is disavenging to the next person or the next black person that want to run for office?
Rhody, just because, if you have connected resources, all you wanna do is be able to bring other people up. So the thing about it is, he has the opportunity to serve at a higher level.
Right.
He came in a much efficient, because now he's at the table to make decisions. He noted, it's easy to go for it, we need to have people that look like us, that are for us in the team, and that was the opportunity to put someone in the seat. The person that was mature prior to getting there, for two days.
Wow.
It was eighty something years ago.
Wow.
It was time for a change.
Right.
How somebody was on the, you know, doing well, doing good, now it's time to put them in a position. You get in a position, there was no less than thirty days, you're hit with a scandal, you're trying to destroy someone's credibility, you're trying to take people, make them, you know, the name.
How did, what that young man, at seventeen years old, still at high school, what he said, how did it affect you? I wanna ask that school board official, if I can.
Definitely, definitely.
If I can catch him right quick, I'll, I'll let me.
It's Tyrone, don't, don't leave Rhody in the interview.
I wanna ask him one question, before I won't leave, lose him. How you doing, can I ask you something over here, away from the crowd, thank you, Tyrone. Try to get you over here in a little corner. Yeah, I ain't gonna get, I'm gonna just give you one or two questions.
Okay.
Okay, um I see your name is Tyrone. Tyrone, what type of work do you do and who you work for?
Well, I work for the Department of Corrections, but I'm also a Suffolk City school board member.
Okay, I got one good question for you. The young man at the end of the comments, he made a statement, he said, I'm only seventeen years old, you from the school board. He said, I'm going through different things at home, different challenges and things at home. He said, Mr. Lee O'Tass saved them by giving him a job. He said that that paycheck that he get makes a big difference in his life. How did that affect you, knowing that you work for the school board, and we deal with so many kids that have issues at home and don't have enough finance to support themselves, and Mr. Lee O'Tass giving him a job, and now they gonna take it away? How did that make you feel when you heard that?
My heart dropped, um my heart dropped when I heard that young man said that. I'm also an alumni at Kingsport High School, and when he said those words, it just opened up. Um because this is not new to me, to see how young people go through. But what is becoming a real care and occurrence is that Mr. Williams is always being that helping hand. There was another young man who is in the military now.
Uh huh.
Who got a job here uh with Mr. Williams, uh who was able to help his family, avoid addiction, helped his family, and actually on state contract, it kept him out of getting in trouble in school, next month, the young man wanted to join the service. And I've seen this other young man, he is a senior in high school, trying to do the best that he can do. And people are out of personal, political reasons to try to teach someone a lesson at the expense of the citizens.
Right.
And it's disheartening, because what we're saying to this young man, this young man is trying his best to help me. I heard the, his emotion and his voice.
Right.
Um he said, please don't take my job, that was a, to me, that was a cry for help.
It was.
Because this young man is trying to make it honest, this young man is trying to stay out there. Because of my feeling which I work, I see a lot of young men that look just like that young man, who had no other opportunity but turned to another means of income. And then you see this young man come here, try not to get emotional about it, but you see this young man come here, and he's crying out for help.
He's crying out for help, he actually stepped up and said, can I say something before y'all end this?
Yes.
He wanted his voice to be heard, he wanted to help say his job, and that's what I received from that.
He did, he's a, that was an authentic, he's thinking, he, it was, it was, he, he spoke from his heart.
Yeah.
And what I'm gonna say to all city council members and anybody that has to say so in this decision, make the right thing. I'm not standing here on behalf of Suffolk City Board, I don't want that to be misrepresented, just coming from another event, but I want to be clear. Do the right thing. Failure has, failure, failure is always an orphan, and success always has many fathers. No one wants to admit that they had something to do with the contract assassination attempt. A lot of people are gonna throw the rock behind their head, and they're not taking into account that there's collateral damage here. There are real people who work these jobs, there are real people who depend on the income from this job. We are in times of uncertainty, nobody knows where the next mill is coming from. People who thought they had their ducks in the road realized my ducks went as straight as they were.
Right.
Uh as I hope they are, and if you have this young man just begging, and you don't know the situation, or what his income is helping, it's disheartening, I just want Suffolk to cut the gangs out.
Right.
Do what's right.
And be coho.
That's right.
Be coho, and thank you, your name one more time?
Tyrone.
Tyrone, thank you, Tyrone, I appreciate you, I'm Rhody Young Live, I'm Rhody Young Live, thank you. When you heard it here first, guys, the domino effect of what the city councilman board and the mayor office is doing to their own citizens here in Suffolk, Virginia, you have people out here crying out for help to save their job. They say it's very important that they keep their job because they don't know where else they're gonna work during this pandemic. Mr. Lee O'Tass Williams kept them employed, kept them off unemployment, kept them from their homes, kept them from going backwards in life, kept them on a good, a good road. As you remember, the young man that's only seventeen years old, a high school student, he was going through issues at home, and this job kind of like saved him and grounded him. The last thing he said was, please, don't take my job. I am in the infinite space, Rhody Young. So, but you did see the difference. Before we been this term, China Three, and also China Thirteen has suffered, Virginia, as to the V, put your personal feelings aside, and the mayor for the school board said it best. It's real people who are working these jobs behind that contract. You are affected, real people across the board. The people that you're affecting are your own citizens of Suffolk, Virginia. Do they deserve to be unemployed just because they also may want city councilman in Suffolk, Virginia?
Rhody, it's the same thing, it's the same thing, so we might win some time, we can hear it at that time, so that we can stream to each people. But, you know, we did what we had to do, so we made it work. They got them, so we're gonna see what we got, right? Because when you see it, it's like playing a free on road, you know? Some people probably didn't even watch, they're like, what is this? So, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a, yeah, so that's what we do, okay, okay. So they weren't out there getting too sad for the couple of times, you know? Yes, but those type of circumstances, it's supposed to be that, yeah. Okay, I see, okay.